In one minute.
Good morning and welcome to the November 21st County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Good morning again, and we'd like to welcome you to the County Commission Meeting. If you need a listening device, you can get some help with Craig or Carol. And before we start our routine business, we'd like to recognize a very valuable part of the county team. Aaron McGowan was named just recently the South Dakota Prosecutor of the Year by the state, I think it's the State Prosecuting Association, correct?
Yeah.
And you're going to be the first one to be able to test that microphone to see if you get electrocuted if you touch it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Aaron. How many years have you been the state's attorney?
I'm in my ninth year.
You're an awesome servant and time commitment and your input and support of this system is just incredibly welcome and thank you for all that.
Just on behalf of the rest of the commission, we were at the law enforcement dinner on November 8th, and Aaron was recognized, and it's a special honor when you're recognized by your peers, because this is something that your peers voted that you are the Prosecutor of the Year for the South Dakota State Prosecuting Association. So we want to congratulate you, and I think Aaron would have, I'm sorry, Marty Jackley had it worded very well. He said, "Aaron has proven himself as a dedicated prosecutor and public servant for Minnehaha County, providing a strong voice for victims of crime." And Aaron had been in private practice before. He's in his third term as our state's attorney, and we're pleased to recognize you. I know you received a plaque four times ago, so just congratulations and we're honored to work with you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, appreciate it. Well, I appreciate the recognition, and as I said when I accepted the award at the State's Attorney Association Conference, it's an award that I share with two families, my family home. What you don't see is a lot of things behind the scenes and sacrifices they make for me to do the job that I truly love, and also the sacrifices of my work family that I see more than the real family. We have a group of dedicated men and women that work tirelessly to protect the most vulnerable citizens in our society, to uphold justice and seek accountability. They do a terrific job, and this award is shared by them as well. So thank you for the recognition.
Thank you, Aaron, for being here.
Thanks.
With that, we'll go to routine business. The first item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda. All moved.
Second.
Thank you, Trish. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Wow. Item number two is to approve the commission minutes from November 14th.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any changes or corrections? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes four to zero. Bills to be paid of $1,225,485.77.
Bills.
Second. Motion and a second to pay the bills. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item four are reports. The auditor's account with the county treasurer as of October 31st is filed, and a Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for October is also filed. Item five is to consider a motion to approve routine personnel action.
That's my motion. Second.
A motion and a second to consider the routine personnel action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There's no applications for abatement, no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices. And now we're to item nine, which is the compromise for lien. The first one is DPN O-4866 for $764.38. I'm sorry, Melinda, I don't know what's going on.
Good morning, Melinda Storley, Commission Assistant. So this petition that's before you, DPN O-4866, in the amount of $764.38, is for poor relief. It's presented by an applicant who is requesting to have his name removed from the joint lien because the lien fees were incurred by his ex-wife after they were divorced. He has presented a divorce certificate dated 1976. The lien amounts were incurred from 1997 to 2001. He'd like to have the lien remain in the name of his ex-spouse. However, register of deed records show that the ex-spouse deceased February 26, 2003, and the clerk of court show no record of probate. The lien remaining in the name of the ex-spouse will be noticed to the Minnehaha County Auditor's Office so that it can be added to the annual end-of-the-year compromise of liens for deceased persons, should you choose to.
Okay. Any questions for Melinda? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to remove the applicant's name and put the remaining amount on the ex-spouse, leaving no payment against the petitioner.
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions? With that, is there a motion to approve? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B, DPN O-55996 for $1,295.20.
Leans presented by a couple who is in the process of purchasing a home. The closing date is scheduled for January 10th, 2008. The lien represents poor relief only for assistance with rent. The, in his narrative, he expressed that his spouse became disabled in 2014. He was the caretaker and had missed a fair amount of work, causing them to file bankruptcy. They've since reestablished their credit enough to be able to afford to buy a home. Their total current assets right now are $11,550, and liabilities equal $6,600. The total income shown in their 2016 income tax was $42,826, with a refund of $1,291. The purchase amount of the home is $1,00, pardon me, $163,000. The applicant is requesting a compromise and release of the lien in full upon payment of $650, approximately 50 percent of the lien amount.
Thank you, Melinda. Does anyone have any questions for her? If not, the, if the lien holder is here, they may speak, but they don't need to be identified, and they can stay at their seat to talk if they would like. They don't have to speak, but if they would wish, we'd be happy to hear from them, so...
Yeah, I'd just like to say that it's kind of popped up at the last minute from the title company, and we're really close coming up with down payment, and I thought real long and hard about paying the whole thing, but once I put it to pen and paper, I didn't think it'd be possible, and cutting it to half would probably make it a lot easier.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions for the gentlemen? Any questions? Commissioner Karski?
No questions for him, but I do have a comment.
Sure.
Okay. You know, compromise for liens are always an interesting backstory, I guess, and...
You don't need to stand.
Yeah. And, you know, when you read through some of the underlying facts and what happened, and, you know, we get to be the judge and jury a lot of times in these circumstances, and the circumstances what brought this compromise here are, you know, very understandable, and I think, you know, I look back at, you know, could it have happened to anyone? And I have a hard time compromising this lien for half, and I'd make a motion to compromise the lien for a dollar.
Is that a motion?
It is.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it for conversation.
Okay.
My comment would be, I understand where you're coming from. We'll be, by compromising this lien, we'll be putting these people on the tax rolls, and we'll be receiving property taxes, which we, we receive some now from rental property. I'm not sure if I want to go a dollar. I'll think about that in a minute. But I get it, because they'll now be paying into and being productive people of our society and paying taxes, so...
And if I may, the reason I say a dollar, I think he's, from his story and just reading the paperwork, I think it's going to be cutting it very, very close to being able to qualify for this loan and the down payment and the other factors that go along with this, and I appreciate the extra effort that is being made by the applicant, and I just want to give them the hand that I think is deserved in this case to make that work.
Commissioner Bender?
I think in light of the actions that we took last week, where we were really looking at not considering poor relief and, you know, holding people more accountable when they, when we provided legal services, that I would be supportive of Commissioner Karski's motion in this instance as well, because that's the only relief that we're looking at here.
Other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to release the lien for a dollar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously clears, and you can go buy a house. Welcome.
Thank you.
Item C is DPN O-33580 for $1,202.50, and DPN O-34788 for $5,001.81. This was deferred from last week. Melinda, if you want to give it.
The combined total of these two liens is $6,204.31. Last week, you requested a breakdown. You wanted to know what was poor relief, what was legal representation, and a record of their payments. So if you see on the memo, I added a little table showing that the, that she had $810 in poor relief and $392.50 in legal representation, and had made no payments on that lien. He had $234.71 in poor relief and $5,127.10 in legal representation, but he had made an attempt to make payments and had contributed $360 towards that lien. The individuals were not married during the time they incurred each of those, but they're here presenting it jointly because they're attempting to refinance a home. However, there is no real estate transaction at this time. They're on hold until they can resolve this lien. As I had mentioned last week, the petitioners explained in their narrative that they're trying to move forward to improve their quality of life in spite of their past and hardships with their son. Their combined annual income is $62,600. Their total assets are $156,474.7, and liabilities are $127,104.95. The total income of the joint income tax for 2016 was totaled at $54,350. They're requesting a release of both liens in full with no payment, or again, we're willing to contribute full payment, pardon me, requesting compromise and release of both liens in full upon payment of $600, approximately nine in percent, just over nine percent of the combined lien.
Thank you.
The petitioner is here to answer any questions.
Okay. Is there any questions, first of all, for Melinda? If the petitioner would like to make comments, we would certainly be happy to hear from them. You just need to stay where you're at is fine, and make the comments, and we would be happy to hear from you.
I didn't realize it was occurring, so I was working on my treatment. I don't know if there are medical problems and vehicles that that, I know that my insurance is not as good as others, and I know the services are used, and I'm a young person. I didn't qualify for exams to do my things, so I led me to becoming a friend of mine. And I don't necessarily remember saying that I had to pay it back. I see there is paperwork that you might sign when you're in the midst of a turmoil. Just kind of overseeing some of those things, and they're happy to identify, but it's just interesting to continue living in your house, so you have to go back and forth and forth. I'm a little bit more, this, the whole building structure of all this, you know, that I've been here before, and services are used, and we always have to all of that. I'm a little bit more, I knew I was eligible, but I didn't have to go on this, so I'm not staying on them yet, but I'm going to have to find a way. Now that's pretty done, either way, I'd be $500 for this, so I don't want to just go over and over again.
Okay. Thank you for coming. Does anyone have any questions? Is there a motion, or...
I just want to make a comment.
Certainly.
There's a lot of public defenders on here, but some of them are, well, most of them are over 20 years old. There's a couple that are, I mean, I think the most recent one is over 14 years ago. I think these, you can never really excuse when you have to use a public defender, but I gather that they were basically kids. They were very young when these things happened, if they were over 20 years ago. And I would be willing to compromise some of that public defender fees. Obviously, the ones for rent assistance and stuff, I would be willing to let go and maybe knock off some of these public defenders, because if they did continue to ride anyway, they would be written off, but...
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Karski?
There is an offer that to pay more. I was just curious, is there a dollar amount attached to that? Ma'am?
Have you thought through that process? You don't really have a dollar amount, is that correct? As, and you don't need to make a decision right now. We can defer this, but we'd prefer not to.
I feel embarrassed, but it's supposed to be a thousand.
You don't need to be embarrassed.
That would be my thought. That was, that was the number that's coming to my head, is a thousand dollars. It defers a lot of, I mean, it releases a lot of those 20-year-old liens and puts them on just the more recent ones, which, like I said, most of them are 20 years old.
Other comments? Commissioner Karski?
You know, when I read through, and this is an extensive amount of paperwork, I guess, with everything that goes through in here, and I looked at, and I have to ask our attorney, what's the, what's the term that you use when you are second on a mortgage?
Subordinate.
Subordinate. Thank you. I talked to one of my friends who's a loan officer about this whole process, and, you know, why we couldn't subordinate a county lien to a first mortgage and keep the lien and, because obviously, the lender is concerned about getting paid and having this lien there. But my understanding from talking to him is any lien, first of all, it used to show up on a, when they did a credit statement. They knew if you had a lien against you, but they no longer know that until they go through the title company, and that's after the process of ordering the appraisal and everything else is done, and the individual may have quite a bit of money involved in the loan closing by that point. So the, these liens don't show up until that time, and as long as you have a lien or a judgment against you, a lender will not borrow you money. We cannot subordinate ourselves to that lender. So learned something a little new yesterday, I guess. That being said, some of the, while these charges are older, some of them are fairly, you know, serious in nature, and to compromise a lien for nothing, I was having a very, very difficult time with. There's a debt to be paid here. What's the magic dollar amount? I don't know. A thousand sounds like it could be a reasonable dollar amount to make this work, but that's just my thought on the matter at this point.
Commissioner?
Well, I mean, these are always very difficult, and, you know, we really always encourage people to make payments. It's, you know, five dollars, $10 a month really just demonstrates a lot of good faith. But I agree with Commissioner Hager here that, you know, really the bulk of the court-appointed attorney's fees are from 1997, so we're talking 20 years ago, and these are folks who have apparently at least not been looking for assistance from the county for quite some time, so, you know, we always have to balance the interests. We're steward of taxpayer dollars, and these are taxpayer dollars, and so we need to try to preserve those dollars for future people who are going to need assistance. But in this instance, I would support a compromise for a payment of a thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Does anybody else have any other comments?
Point of order, Mr. Chair, if we have a thousand dollars, is do two DPN Os, how would you like the allocation made to one or the other?
Can they just both be forgiven for, I mean, I don't particularly care that they...
Does it have to be?
Just pro rata.
Affected?
Apply it pro rata.
Five hundred for each, on each DPN, each of the, there's a $1,202.50, and then there's a $5,000. So, I mean, I...
I would take the thousand dollars and apply it pro rata, percentage-wise, to those statements, and then have both of them.
Our resident state's attorney says we can do it 50/50, and we'll be fine. First of all, I don't think you need to be embarrassed. Anybody that comes to this and says something takes a lot of guts, more than I would have, frankly, so I think that says a lot about your character, and since you haven't done any issues or had any issues for 20 years, that also takes courage to change your life, so I'll support this. We have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Penega, I just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
A 50/50, I don't think really works in this circumstance, given them, the dollars involved. I really would prefer that they, it be applied pro rata on a percentage basis.
Is that okay with the motion?
I agree.
Okay with the second? Okay, whomever did one and two, I don't know. I lost track. We have a motion to apply a thousand dollars pro rata to clear both DPNs. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
We're at opportunity for public comment. Does anyone have any public comments that they would like to make about an item that is not on the agenda? If not, we'll go to item 10 to consider a motion to authorize a museum director, Bill Hoskins, to sign an agreement between Sulan Heritage Museum and Yankton College for exhibit design services.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sulan Heritage Museums. I brought an agreement today between Yankton College and the Sulan Heritage Museums for the museum to provide exhibit design services for Yankton College. Now, we do exhibit work on contract every year on a small basis. Last year, we did work for the city of Deadwood, Fort Sissons and State Park, the Mitchell Archaeological Site, but they were all fairly small projects, and one of the reasons I'm bringing this to you today is this is a project that's projected to be over multiple years with preliminary design completed in 2018, final design in 19, and then we go forward to production and installation. That would be in June of 20. Also, the dollar amount potential is fairly substantial, and that's one of the reasons I'm bringing it to you today. All expenses and revenues associated with this would be accounted for in the museum's special enterprise fund. All the full-time labor that's spent will be reimbursed to the operations budget from the enterprise fund, which is our standard practice.
Thank you, Bill.
Questions?
Anyone have any questions for Bill?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Item 11 is to authorize a chair to sign amendment number one to the design services agreement between the county and JSA engineers and land surveyors to add plating and wetland analysis services for Highway, excuse me, Highway 149 reconstruction project. Shannon Schultz.
There's a magic spot here. Maybe Trish has the touch.
Oh, Trish is good.
She's in charge of IT, obviously.
The council of the highway committee, the authority today is the standard kind of agreement that we add, so when more reveal, that we get into the memory. Part of this amendment, the, yeah, amendment, design services, we, the, the term here is called hydrogeomorphic analysis, which then in turn determines how functional classification units are used in the mitigation. We've done this before. This is common. We've used to Tonka Wetland Bank and Clark, two, holder of JSA.
This could be a comedy by the time we're done.
We're all the way down.
Trish, you just have to stand there and hold it for another couple hours. Shannon, do you want to just take a second, see if Tony can fix this?
So short. There's tape.
Oh, that's not good.
Don't touch it. Not touching again.
Nobody touched the mic. Please continue.
So, I finished there with Clark is a sub to JSA, and their fee for it to complete their HDM analysis is $2,645. Continuing on with the environmental review process, there's a small subcontract under JSA with Prairie Lakes Archaeological to complete archaeological and historical surveys to the tune of $2,400. And then finally, as part of JSA's work, they have to prepare H-plat exhibits, and so what that is... And so what that is, is we're taking places where right of way is in, is less than a hundred feet wide with corridor for our six-point-two-mile reconstruction project, Highway one forty-nine, and we're getting out to a hundred feet. And there's going to be twenty-four parcels that require such H-plats. And so combined with all three of those adds to our contract is a twenty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-dollar addition, bringing the total fee for preliminary engineering and final design services to three hundred forty-five thousand, five hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-two cents, should you approve that amendment. And that is our request.
Thank you for your patience, first of all. Any of you, want to have any questions for Shannon?
FYI, this would be built in twenty twenty and then paving in twenty twenty-one.
Wow. Is it typical to do an archaeological service contract?
You know what kind of varies? Uh, we take advice from the Corps of Engineers. They're charged because they're a sister of federal agency to, in the National Historic Preservation Act, and then they sublet that to the State Historic Preservation Office. And when we make preliminary discussions with them, sometimes they say, hey, you know, don't worry about the archaeological. But on this one, they kind of said, we probably need an archaeological. Typically highways are in disturbed ground areas anyway. Uh, and then farm fields, of course, disturb ground too, but when they see we're taking a corridor and widening it, that was the red flag. If we already had a hundred-foot corridor, my opinion would have been said that they would have not required archaeological.
Thank you for the explanation. Any other questions? Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amendment. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Uh, item twelve is to consider a motion to approve change order two for highway improvements for crack seal twenty sixteen project.
That's correct. This is a construction, basically in a, an extension project for construction services as Commissioner Benninga said. This is a two thousand sixteen original contract. Towards the end of the year in sixteen, they did not get done with their work, so they spilled over into seventeen. And so at that time, we said, well, would you honor the contract bid prices to do more work in seventeen? And so that's what they agreed to do and that's what we did. And so we added nineteen point five miles, which is in preparation for things that we're going to overlay microsurface and chip seal in nineteen, in eighteen. So we did the crack sealing this year. And so that total, uh, of about, uh, two hundred and four thousand five hundred dollars, uh, for the nineteen point five mile addition, brings that contract to a total of five hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred ninety-six dollars and ten cents.
Questions for Shannon, Commissioner Bender?
So I'm just confused. Are, did they already do the nineteen point five miles? Are they going to do the nineteen point five miles in two thousand and eighteen?
It's actually done. So this is to make, correct that amount. And then in a couple of weeks, when we get the final paperwork, we will come forward or actually what we'll do is we'll make a final payment to the contractor. And we've been told by the contractor that in the end, um, they used a little bit less material than they thought they would need. So the contract total will end up being less, but at this time, um, the contract needs to be amended to that amount because that's what we asked for is nineteen point five miles. But they ended up using a little bit less tonnage or, excuse me, pounds of cracks in material per mile. So, uh, that will make more sense, uh, the next time either DJ or I in front of you explaining what happened.
Other questions? Does that mean, Shannon, that the additional contract is a two thousand eighteen allocation or is it?
It would have been two thousand seventeen budget dollars for crack seal. So we, we took the two thousand sixteen project that was contracted and we just simply added to it at the agreed upon, um, contract unit prices. So in essence, we just had them extend their contract a year.
One other question. Where are we at? Do we know with the two thousand seventeen highway budget, are we under or are we?
I would, I, I don't know that for a fact, but just because we haven't spent all the dollars for two thousand seventeen in terms of, uh, completing all the payments to contractors, I would think that we're under at this time. Um, in the end, because we got good bid prices early in the year, if we remember, uh, I expect that we would be under our budget estimate. But, um, DJ can probably answer that more fully with a, a question.
Motion to approve.
Guess I have a question. If we should defer this until we know where we're at with our annual budget and our final numbers before we decide where this should have come from? Does that make sense?
I don't have a problem with that.
Uh, would you do that for us and then bring it back, please, before the end of the year?
DJ just texted me. He's apparently watching. Uh, he said our, we're under more than three million dollars on our two thousand seventeen construction budget.
Can we record that text?
Recorded Shannon recording that text. I'll make a motion to approve.
Yep, that's good. Thank you. And tell DJ thanks for the answer. Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item thirteen is to consider a motion to deposit proceeds from the sale of the surplus highway department items on various public auction sites to the highway fund or to the general fund.
Hi again, commissioners. So there was a, I'm going to, sorry, I think DJ might have some more. Nothing. Excuse me. So there was a, we, we, we sent some surplus materials that you guys all approved to, to be sent to surplus. Uh, we did three auctions. One was at Gomans, one was at Interstate and one was through Iron Planet. The proceeds of which, uh, are in your agenda packet. And by the way, you guys approved all this stuff to go to, um, surplus September twelfth. And so, uh, we made probably better than expected. You can see what we had for value. And just for example, on the books, we had a, a, a nineteen seventy-eight trailer that carried fifty tons. We estimated a book value of fifteen hundred dollars and it actually sold for thirteen thousand. So we, we did pretty good and I think we, we, that's generally been the trend is our construction equipment ends up bringing more than we have in our books. So in the end, uh, there was some proceeds for sale and you had the option of, of putting that into the highway fund or into the general fund.
Any questions for Shannon? Commissioner Heiburger?
To comment? That's a really nice pot of money. That's a, a big amount of money. That was over seventy-two thousand dollars. But I would make a motion to put it back into the highway fund. That's been what we've been doing for the last few years. And I think that stealing from the highway fund to put into the general fund is not a good practice. So it's my motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the deposit proceeds, if you will, into the highway fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion unanimously passed. Thank you, Shannon. Item fourteen is a briefing on the Juvenile Detention Center third quarter report. Jamie?
Good morning, Jamie Grabot, Juvenile Detention Center Director. Uh, I presented you with a report that summarizes what's been going on at JDC up until October thirty-first of this year. So through the first three quarters, uh, it also gave you a little bit of information about, uh, projections that I see possible in eighteen and some possible budget issues that I may present you in the next budget cycle. Uh, in summary, our intake calls completed are down. Our admissions are down just a little bit, but our bed days and average length of stay are up. Um, we contribute this to the number of youth being direct filed into adult court. Uh, we've seen an, uh, significant increase in those numbers this year. Uh, we're hoping that that trend does not continue. But what happens is their cases get drawn out because they're going to try to come back to juvenile court and it draws out the time that the cases are going on. Uh, these are cases like murder, manslaughter, first degree rape, first degree burglary, first degree robbery. So these are kids that are going to be in our custody during the completion of the cases. Our community supervision numbers are starting to go up. Uh, we currently have twenty-two on community supervision today. Lincoln County is starting to use this a lot more than they have the last couple of years. Uh, we do charge Lincoln County for this, uh, service. So we've seen an increase in, or an unexpected amount of income from that during this year. As far as two thousand seventeen budget, uh, we're right on track to hit the number that we projected. It's been steady with last year's amount, even with these increased bed days. Uh, we've been able to manage our budget and keep it at the same amount. We've basically stayed steady for the past four years with the exception of taking on shelter care. Some of the challenges that we've found that could affect us in two thousand eighteen is with these adult cases going on, they don't handle court out at JDC for those cases. So we're making a lot more transports to the courthouse for those. There's been times where we've had to transport two or three individuals at the same time and we don't have a vehicle capable of doing that. Uh, we've been able to, uh, loan a vehicle from the sheriff's department or the jail. They've been very cooperative in that manner. Uh, however, we're worried that there may come a time where they have conflicts and can't do that. So transportation is a challenge in that situation. It also pulls staff off our lot, off the main floor of, uh, our secure area, uh, which could affect our ratios that we need to maintain. So those are our biggest concerns with, if we see this trend continuing. Um, we have a couple of aging vehicles that haven't been too expensive yet. We've been able to maintain, but it's that feeling you get that it's just one thing after another of little things and the values of the vehicle are low. It's a nineteen ninety-nine Lumina and a two thousand four Kia. That's, that's the main summary of the report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So anyone have any questions for Jamie? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just make a comment that over the last six years, as we've made changes in how we run our JDC, that there's been, um, a lot of really good things to come out of it, that as you see, our bed days have gone up. That's because we're keeping the most violent and scary people in the JDC now and that we're using our shelter care and our home supervision to keep kids out, out of JDC where data shows us by putting low-level kids into JDC with these high-level people, you just exasperate where they're going. Um, so we're able to keep kids out of the system and, um, Jamie was going to look for me in the future here and find out what is the reoccurrence rate with these kids? If we're actually putting them in, in shelter care and home supervision, are they reoffending? And what's the occurrence of that and stuff? So that's something he's going to look into in the future for us.
I can, I can give you a brief answer on that. Uh, we don't have a lot of data on that yet because the shelter care with LSS is so new. But in the calendar year twenty seventeen, fifty-three percent of the kids that go into shelter care are one-time visitors. So we're not seeing a return of them as much. But we don't have data to look back one, three or five years to determine the long-term effect of shelter care or our alternatives, if they're really keeping the kids out of further trouble. We're hoping they are. Uh, we're seeing success with the Evening Reports Center. So much so that kids want to continue in that program after disposition, but it's not possible. It's a predisposition program. However, LSS applied for a United Way grant and, uh, to try and continue that post-disposition, to try and keep those efforts going in the evening to support these kids. And they're having a meeting in the near future on that. I believe, uh, Commissioner Heiburger wrote a letter in support of that. And, uh, so we're seeing positive effects with kids. The, the Evening Reports Center helps kids find jobs. Uh, they're helping them with homework. Uh, they're giving them an evening meal that they might not usually get. So, so we're really working with the kids to do the right thing, uh, for them. We look at it as an investment in the future. Hopefully these programs that we're putting them in will prevent them from going into the deeper end of the system, in the juvenile system. And long-term, we're, we're really hoping is that we keep them out of jail and prison in the future.
I think I, if I remember right, when I started six years ago, there was a lot of conversation started before that about potentially building a significant addition to the JDC. And now because of alternate programs, uh, we're keeping people out. And that conversation has completely gone away, to be honest, for now anyhow.
Correct.
But more importantly, I think we're getting those kids in the right place. And it sounds like the success rate is fairly significant to keep them out for the second time. So that's a good thing for everybody.
Yeah. When the, the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative project or philosophy was put in place, at that time, we were looking at, I believe, uh, building an entire new facility to house a hundred youth uh, at a cost of about fifteen or sixteen million dollars. Uh, and we've been able to avoid that and we've actually been able to reduce our capacity at JDC from fifty-four secure beds to thirty-nine secure beds.
Awesome. It's a good trend. Any comments or questions? Thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing from you again.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too. Uh, item fifteen is to authorize the chair to sign an easement agreement with Sioux Valley Energy for access to Minnehaw County property legally described as printed, uh, containing approximately twenty acres more or less, all shown by the plat. Craig Dewey, good morning, Craig.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. The easement before you is for Booker's Prairie Park, which is a county park. Uh, the land was donated by the Booker family and as long as it remains a public park, it can continue to be held by the county. Uh, Sioux Valley Energy is requesting an easement to rebuild some power lines that were damaged in an ice storm earlier this year. And as I did a little bit more research, the situation is not uncommon where, uh, past easements didn't end up being officially recorded. So now that the line needs to be repaired and upgraded, Sioux Valley Energy is requesting this easement. And, uh, it would run along the southern, uh, part of the park from the southwest corner to the southeast corner. If you have any other questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Craig?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the easement agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item sixteen is to consider a motion to accept or reject a single bid for purchase of property located at nine oh eight Northwest, legally described as printed. The, uh, recording plat is the governing board may reject any or all bids. However, the governing board accepts a bid, it must be the high, the bid of the highest bidder, Carol Muller.
Um, good morning, Commissioner Heiburger, Commissioner Benninga and Commissioner Karski. Yes, before you today is the, um, information about the bid opening that we had last week on the nine oh eight Northwest Avenue building and land. You declared them surplus in June. You had an appraisal done of them, done on that, on that particular facility, which came across as two point four five million. You directed us to, uh, work through, doing a sealed bid process. On this building, we opened the bids on November fifteenth at ten thirty AM and the auditor's office received one bid for one point one million dollars from Bender Commercial Real Estate Services that was representing Dal Rommel Village. And that bid of one point one million represents forty-five percent of the appraised as-is fee simple estate market value. So with that, we need to have action from the three of you today as representing the commission as, um, what you'd like to do with that bid, either accept or reject bids.
Just want to make sure that people are aware that, uh, Commissioner Bender has recused herself from this conversation. Are there questions for Carol in this whole process? Commissioner?
If we, um, reject today, then we will come back and have a discussion with possibly Commissioner Barth here and Commissioner Bender on, um, what we are going to do going forward.
Yes, yes. You have that option and the other options that are available to you are either a public auction or listing, um, listing with a broker, which you have done in the past. If you recall, the haul land a few years ago was listed with a broker.
Any other questions?
I'm not happy with the amount that was offered. Yeah, I guess if you're looking at bare ground, maybe that would be reasonable and to take down the building or to remove the asbestos. I'm not really sure which direction to go, just because obviously it's an old building and it's tired. But, um, we do have an appraisal that it's worth more than one point one million. I guess I'm interested in what other people's thoughts are because I, I'm really not sure that I would like to accept this bid since we have other options.
If I may to add on to your comments, from my understanding, structurally, this is a very sound building unlike maybe other buildings that we own that would be better off pushed in. So I, you know, yeah, I, I don't think there's been enough time. This is a large commercial real estate transaction. I think we need to allow this greater opportunity to, for, for other, and maybe another process, so that we can increase the revenues that we see from this. And I, I'm definitely not happy with, you know, taking, I would not accept a bid like this either.
Comments?
Well, I, I always think we should take a chance on cash. I don't like the bid price either, but, um, I'm not sure waiting is going to change it dramatically. There is, uh, an operating cost to leave the building unoccupied, and it deteriorates, as we all know, over time. I'm willing to defer it till we hear from Commissioner Barth. A public auction might be a process we could go through. We did list it before, I think.
No, this building has never been listed.
Oh, this one has not?
Yes.
Uh, we offered to have people come and
Correct.
receive a commission if they came up with a customer, correct? So I don't know how much more we can do to advertise this, and the land price is probably what people are interested in, and I'm really not too excited about the building, which I understand, but, uh, I'm willing to wait until Commissioner Barth comes back and we can talk about this in more detail. Unfortunately, I don't know that we're going to see a larger price because it's where it's at versus what it is.
You want a motion to defer for one week?
I'm not sure what the schedule, when is Commissioner Barth going to be back?
He will be back next Tuesday.
Okay. Next Tuesday, we also have the signing of the bond documents for, uh, the jail-related issues, so, uh, maybe we ought to wait two weeks.
Is that a problem, Carol?
You know, my only thought is I, I don't know the protocol in terms of how long you wait to respond back to the bidder. That would be my only question, and I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know that two weeks is a long time for anybody in the development business, but if we, if you want to do it next week, that's fine with me.
I make a motion to defer one week. Maggie, did you have a comment on it?
Okay.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, if you, if you deferred it one week and wanted an additional week, you could always defer it again.
Good point.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to defer one week.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to defer the conversation for one week. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item seventeen is county liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports?
I do have one, but could you maybe grab Commissioner Bender so she knows that she can come back in? Thank you. Um, my only report would be, I got a email from Equalization Office, and that they said that the two thousand eighteen ag land values would increase by an average of two point nine percent. Um, I'm sure we'll have people upset again about that, but just to remind our audience that, that is a five-year, um, production average, and they had some really good years. You know, we know from the Secretary of Agriculture, who spoke to the chamber, um, about a month or so back, that there are some difficulties in the ag community this year, and it is going to be, um, a stretch for them, I think. But to remember that they've had some really good years, and, and we do need to save for the bad times, and, um, I have sympathy on them. But, um, anyway, just to let you know that, um, ag, ag values will increase by an average of two point nine in two thousand eighteen.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Bender?
I'll just report briefly that I was, um, able to attend the Town and Townships meeting last night. The room was full. Um, just very appreciative of folks that are willing to serve on their local township board. That's, uh, it's, it's where local government is at its finest, because you're, you know, right there dealing with your neighbors. And, uh, it was very impressive to see so many people turn out to learn about developments and, um, affecting the townships and to hear those folks. And I, I was also very impressed by, uh, the Minnehaha County employees that were there that made presentations. Lynn DeYoung did a nice job explaining where we are in the ambulance and, uh, was able to recruit a couple of volunteers to sit on a committee to look at funding, which I think is, is very helpful. He did a nice job explaining, um, how the county's funding affects the local ambulances and, and how they're likely to be shortfalls possibly as the medical system and reimbursements continue to change, and that we've got to be proactive in looking at, uh, ways to, um, provide those services. And was particularly, um, pointed about townships being, participating in that, and there, they expressed an interest in, in providing that service to their constituents. So I thought it was a good conversation. I thought the highway department did a really nice job as well. So I just wanted to thank everybody who will show up on a Monday night of Thanksgiving week. I think it's extra credit points, so I appreciate their service.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Uh, any new business? Any old business? With that, I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for contracts, litigation, and personnel. I move.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into at nine fifty, well, that's going to be another few minutes before we sign documents. In ten minutes, to go into exec session for contracts, litigation, and personnel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.